The April 21st, 2020 meeting of the Richmond Sanitary District Board of Commissioners is called to order. I hope that everyone bears with us as this is our first, I guess, social distancing meeting. It will be on YouTube and we have people at various locations. And so based upon our strength of our Wi-Fi's and so on and so forth, we'll see how it goes. I see that we have nine panelists and four other attendees. If there's anyone who is not with either the staff or the board, could you please let us know who you are? Can they speak to us, Kate? I have actually Denise has an attendee, so I understand her. But then I have a two different, one phone call. Yeah, I can say allowed to talk. This would be...
This is Todd.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then I have someone else at phone number that ends with 7450. Do we know who's at the phone number 765-983-7450?
It's somebody else, somebody else, City Diver from the district.
Perfect.
Here's someone there. Is that Leanne?
I'm at 8782.
It comes up.
Did you hear me?
Yes, I heard you then.
Okay.
I still don't think I heard who was at 983-7450. Oh, you're right. Okay. Now I think you can speak. Okay, well, we will move on, I guess. The first item of business is approval of minutes from the March 10th, 2020 meeting. Do I hear a motion? Amon, I have as no, as no phone.
Why don't you make the motion currently?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the March 10th, 2020 meeting as presented.
There's Amon. And Amon, did you make a second?
Yes, I second.
There's been a motion and second to approve the minutes for the March 10th, 2020 meeting. Any further discussion or comments? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Amon, Amon?
Yes.
Greg, Greg?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Sue, Sue?
Aye. There's been a motion and second and it was approved. The minute, oh, I forgot to let you count, do the count.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, the approval, the minutes for the March 10th, 2020 meeting are approved. The next item of business is approval of invoices of check date March 6th, 20th, 22nd, 27th, April 3rd, and 10th, 2020.
President Miller? President Miller, is it Miller?
You're not, you're not here yet.
President Miller?
I'm gonna leave, so.
President Miller?
President Park?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve invoices for a check date run, March 6th, 20th, 27th, in April 3rd, 10th, of 2020. Total, 303,000, $161,06. We did have some significant invoices first from Micso, Micso Excavating Incorporated for $13,800. Three payments to Commonwealth Engineers. First payment of $10,982.50, and $11,617. Also to Pyramid Equipment for $13,730. And inland waters pollution for $38,193.69.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign language.
Well, I was getting some background, so I was trying to mute and unmute people and having a little difficulty getting that to happen. Okay, there's been a motion and second to approve invoices of check date March 6th, 20th, 27th, April 3rd, and 10th of 2020. Any further questions or comments? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Amon, Amon?
Aye.
Greg, Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, Sue?
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The invoices have been approved as presented. The next item of business is the Director's Report.
We have an interest of revenue. And with some issues around, not being responsible. We're following all the guidance, as you all know, with this new state of things. All of our services have continued without interruption. We did however, have to limit the landfill hours this past week. These are all in accordance with executive orders and recommendations from our task force and the state. The Governor's Office. Unless you have any questions as opposed, or specific to those, those topics, let us move on with the business of the meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions, Amon, or Greg? The next item of business is to open the bids that were previously submitted for a recycling truck. And Greg, you have those?
Yes.
Yes.
We have two bids.
Greg, can you move your camera down? That also doesn't work yet.
First bid is from Municipal Equipment Incorporated. This is for a 2021 International HB 607, GS Products 24 cubic yard split body. Total price for one recycling truck, $227,617.23. The bid is burned for 30 days. The delivery time is 250 days. And they also have included a bid bond. The second bid is from Terrorage Equipment Incorporated. This is for a Freightliner M2 106. Split body is a Bridgeport 60 slash 40 Ranger.
Does it say the year?
It does not. At least what I'm seeing here, it does not have the year.
Put a quote in, just listing the Freightliner. If separately, if on like an invoice or a...
Yeah, I'm looking.
I just didn't thought if you saw that, you could find the year.
We can check them, Greg. Greg, we can check that part of the year later. Are we able to find the bid price?
I do not see the bid. Oh, I saw it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The price is $231,898. And they have included a bid bond.
Was that all then? So we sent out ten and we got two back?
Yes.
Okay. They will be referred to Management for Recommendation at a later meeting. The next item of business was, is to open quotes previously submitted for wastewater retreat, treatment plant, was that spot repairs?
Spot repair for the digester roof.
Digester roof, okay.
Okay, we have, here's, we had two bids.
And how many did we send out of those, Denise?
We said three out.
Okay, thank you. And Greg, what'd we get?
I've received two bids.
First bid is from Ohio Valley Painting in Dayton, Ohio. Their bid is as follows. Digester lids per individual lid, $35,830. The other item was digester lids, total, $143,320. The second bid is from Protective Coatings Incorporated of Dayton, Ohio. Does not appear that they wrote in the bid amount.
They just return our package with no bid?
We'll have, I'll have Ryan take a look at it also.
Yeah, they just don't men the price, the price quote.
Included, included everything else. Included everything else, signed behind it, there's no numbers.
Okay, well, again, we will refer those to Management to take a look at and get back to us with a recommendation at a later meeting. The next item of business was the recommendation to award the bid for one Knuckle Boom Trash Truck Loader. Jeff, is that you?
Yes, yes, Madam President, Board members. At our March 20th, 2020 Board Meeting, we received bids for the Richmond Sanitary District of a purchase of a new Knuckle Boom Trash Loader. We asked for a 2020 truck or newer. After reviewing the bids, it is our recommendation to the Board to look, to award this to Municipal Equipment Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky, at the cost of $142,468.7. This trash loader is a Pac-Mac KBF 20-ML with a Freightliner M2 106 chassis. Freightliner Equipment is the lowest, most responsible, and responsible company to bid this, bidding the 2020 truck. And I do have bid tabs attached.
Walt, can I unmute you here? Is this a case where we did have some lower bids, but they were for, they were not for 2020 models, that we should specify the fact that they failed or in our motion?
I can give a reason why we didn't pick those. The two, the two bids that were lower were demos. One was a 2018 and the other one was a 2019. So, well, excuse me, yeah, 2018 and 2019, we did request the 2020 or newer chassis. So we will be getting a brand-new truck.
Yes, the...
Do I have Walt's muted? Okay, well, sorry, I think the word muted, trying to get to unmuted.
The, Greg and I spoke about this.
Greg and I spoke about this earlier.
Two bids that have a lower financial price, two bids that have a lower financial price. 2018 and 2019, and the bid specs, according to Jeff, called for a 2020 or newer model. And so the lower bids, price-wise, can be rejected because they're not compliant with the bid specs.
So we just, we don't even mention that in the question? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Boxey?
Motion to recommend, motion for recommendation to approve a 2020 Knuckle Boom Trash Loader with Freightliner chassis. Should be awarded to Municipal Equipment of Louisville, Kentucky, at the cost of $142,468.7.
I'll second the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Greg's muted, okay. Okay. Second from Greg. There's been a motion and a second to award the bid for a new Knuckle Boom Trash Loader freight, with a Freightliner chassis to Municipal Equipment of Louisville, Kentucky, at a cost of $142,468.7. Is there any further question or comment? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Amon, Amon?
Aye.
Greg, Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, Sue?
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation for a QPA purchase of five trucks.
Yes, Madam President and Board members. Larkin Greenwood Ford, formerly Advantage Ford Lincoln of Connersville, Indiana, is the Indiana QPA dealer for the state. I ask for quotes on the following trucks. One new truck for our landfill department, 2020 Ford F-250 Super Duty truck. One for our wastewater maintenance department, a 2020 Ford F-350 Super Duty truck with a service body. And one operations department truck, 2020 Ford F-250 Super Duty truck. And one for our lab department, a Ford F-150 truck. And one for our sewer maintenance department, a 2020 F-150 pickup truck. My recommendation to the Board, Larkin Greenwood, that's me, prices for each of these trucks and the state Indiana Quality Purchase Agreement, number 15, number 15271. I spoke with Cara Messler, our purchasing agent. She was fine with using the QPA for these purchases. And I think at a board meeting or two ago, we, I did talk to the Board about this and it was approved to go ahead and move forward with the QPA. So it's my recommendation to the Board to award these trucks, purchases to Larkin Greenwood Ford, formerly Advantage Ford Lincoln of Connersville, at the cost of each truck is listed below. This includes, excuse me, this include all that is standard and everything else that is on specification sheet. I'll list them by department. This would be landfill department truck. It's a 1, 2, 120 F-250 Super Duty Crew Cab truck at the cost of $42,156.44. The next one is for our wastewater maintenance department. It's a 2020 F-350 Crew Cab truck with a service body at the cost of $52,060.49. Our operations department, it's a 2020 F-250 regular cab truck at the cost of $28,896.68. And then lab department, the 2020 F-150 Super Crew truck at the cost of $34,809.52. A 2000, this is for our maintenance department, it's a 2020 F-150 extended cab at the cost of $32,014.26. The utility side will pay $16,707.13. And the other, that will be split with our stormwater account, which we'll do at the next meeting. Have any questions, I'd be glad to ask them, or answer them.
No, thank you. And so, just to make sure that we understand the process, you developed the specs as you normally would to send out four quotes, but because of the QPA, we only use the, what used to be Advantage, now Larkin. And they then returned with the prices for this, with their specifications that we requested.
Correct.
So, yeah, I think this will be a good opportunity to see how this works. And do you feel comfortable with these prices?
Yes, actually, the last few times we have sent out regular quotes, we did buy them from Advantage Ford at the time, which is now as Larkin. So they, even though we didn't go off the QPA, we still got the good prices from Advantage Ford. So this way, with the QPA, it's already been quoted out through the state. And yeah, these prices are very reasonable or better than what we've paid in the past.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of five vehicles from Richmond Sanitary District from Larkin Greenwood Ford of Connersville, Indiana, as submitted on the state Indiana QPA Agreement number 15271, as described by Jeff Logan.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the purchase of five trucks as listed from Larkin Greenwood Ford under the QPA process. Is that sufficient? Any further questions or comments? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Amon, Amon?
Aye.
Greg, Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, Sue?
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve private hauler permits, number 27 to 46 for Rumpke of Cincinnati. And I guess I, we usually have no discussion on those. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve private hauler permits, number 27 dash 46 for Rumpke of Cincinnati, Ohio, effective immediately and expiring December 31st of 2020.
I can...
There's been a motion and a second to approve private hauler permits, number 27 to 46 for Rumpke of Cincinnati, Ohio, effective immediately and expiring 12/31 of 2020. Any further discussion or comments? If not, Jess, we call the roll.
Amon?
Aye.
Greg, Greg?
Aye.
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 Sue, Sue?
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve change order number three, also the final for the wastewater treatment plant sledge thickening improvement project.
Yes, Madam President, Board. This is the final change order, change order three for our wastewater treatment plant sledge thickening project. As you know, the project's been operational for some time now, but we worked with the lot department because of some of the delays on the project to get to this final change order. And so this gives some additional days to the contractor to finish things up, both on the substantial completion side and the final completion side. There's a few punch list items that they still have remaining. So it gives them approximately five weeks from today to complete that work. And it decreases the project cost by $38,000. So the new total contract price with all approved change orders is $1,588,117.62. And this adds 165 substantial completion days and 294 final completion days. So it's my recommendation to approve this change order.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion. Are there questions?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Boxey?
Motion to recommend, for recommendation to approve change order number three, final for wastewater treatment plant sledge thickening improvement project as presented?
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve change order number three, final for the wastewater treatment plant sledge thickening improvement project as presented. Further questions or comments? I know this was a long process, um, lot of diligent effort to gather the information for this change order as well as negotiation, thanking the Elijah, Brian, Pat, and the law department for their work on that. And we are glad that it has been operational though during, during this, during this delay. With no further questions or comments, um, Jess, will you call the roll?
Almon, Almon.
Aye.
Greg, Greg.
Aye.
Sue, Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero, closed.
Thank you. The next item of the business is the recommendation to approve a contract for the landfill gas well construction design and certification.
Yes, Madam President and Board, um, I've been working with Darren Duncan at the landfill to talk about, uh, the need for some gas wells, uh, to be put in out there and some of our, um, uh, our act itself. We had found, um, since the last, so this, this wasn't originally in, in this year's budget, but we found some seats in areas that, um, uh, are in need of, of, um, of taking care of there. Uh, we do scans every year, um, to detect gas coming out of the, the landfill. Um, as you know, the landfill, um, process, um, decomposition process produces methane, uh, so we scan and record those levels. Um, we've not violated yet, but, uh, they've been, um, slightly higher than what, uh, we've typically seen, so we think, um, it's prudent to go ahead and, and get a few wells put in. Um, so we worked with Andrews Engineering, who is our on-call consultant, uh, out there. Uh, they do a lot of the testing for us and handle some of the regulatory things on an annual basis. Um, and we asked them for a proposal, uh, to design and, um, certify, uh, the, um, a few new wells to be put in. Um, so that's what, that's what this is. Uh, so the recommendation would be to enter into an agreement with Andrews Engineering Incorporated, uh, for the design oversight and reporting services of the new 2020 New Paris Pike landfill gas expansion project. It'd be for an hourly not to exceed cost of $29,000, uh, and, uh, attached to the, uh, agenda report is their proposal, and it breaks it down into a couple of different areas. But, uh, the total not to exceed cost would be $29,000.
Thank you, Elijah. Is, at the landfill, are we heating any of the buildings with the gas or is it just being flamed?
Uh, right now, we're just burning it off. We did look a while back at, uh, doing that. We would have to run some, uh, gas lines and change out the equipment. Um, the, the main building that has any kind of substantial use, uh, is the solid waste garage out there, uh, and they currently use propane to, to heat that. But from a, a financial standpoint, uh, the cost of the equipment, uh, and, and project to get, get it over there, um, i- it didn't make a lot of sense to, uh, to do that. Um, I, I still, uh, we, we were talking not too long ago about, um, some other things. I mean, I, I still would love to do something with that, uh, it's just finding the right, right project and scenario, um, to make it financially viable to, to proceed with something.
Yeah, that's unfortunate that we can't. Uh, but I, yes, you, it's something you can continue to monitor as more gases, uh, apparently produced.
Y- yes, yeah, uh, and that's something, as, as we get more gas wells installed, um, that's, that was part of the conversation we had with Andrews and talking about, um, this project. Um, you know, as, as we move farther along and, um, and get more areas where we're collecting gas, uh, you know, the, um, the amount of gas that we have may be more, um, uh, more, lend itself more to, to a different type of project than, um, than we, what we have now, that may make it, uh, financially feasible to be able to do.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, any other questions or will entertain a motion?
President Miller?
President Miller? Miller?
I have a question. Um, Elijah, will this, uh, project move forward? Will this be installed yet this year?
That would be the hope, that, uh, we could get the design done and, um, construction done, uh, yet this year. It won't, um, it won't take a, a lot to do. Um, it's not a real complicated, uh, project, so, um, we have money, uh, available for the, these, uh, design services, and we're looking at the, the construction side. I mean, the construction side is, I forget off the top of my head, I, I want to say it was around $60,000 to, uh, to do, so, um, we'll, uh, before we get to that point, we'll make sure we have either funds available or, uh, determine whether we need to appropriate a little bit of money. Um, but we definitely want to do this before, uh, we get to the point where we violate some kind of air scan, uh, that which would put us into a situation where we'd have to, uh, do a lot more work to, um, to fix the problem and get out of that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or I will entertain a motion?
President Miller? I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement with Andrews Engineering, uh, for the design and quality assurance services to expand the existing gas collection system at the New Paris Pike landfill for a cost not to exceed $29,000, as described in the attack in the scope and fee proposal.
There's been a motion and a second to award contract with Andrews Engineering, Inc., for design and quality assurance services to expand the existing gas collection system at the New Paris Pike landfill. Uh, it will be a not to exceed cost of $29,000 and will, as described in the scope and fee proposal. Any further questions or comments? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Almon, Almon.
Aye.
Greg, Greg.
Aye.
Sue, Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero, closed.
Thank you. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades project number one.
Yes, Madam President and Board, um, this is a, a change order we found, uh, during construction that, uh, um, this is on our, our wastewater treatment plant project, um, that, uh, the area in which we needed to install, um, the new flow splitter box, uh, which is new concrete structure with nine, uh, sets of gates and, um, meters, um, to distribute the flow, uh, to all of our irrigation basins, um, we found that in this area, um, there was a fiber optic line, um, that, uh, that was located and needed to be dealt with. Um, we knew, uh, telephone lines were in this area and we had planned for out relocation, but, uh, the plans didn't call out anything for fiber relocation, so, um, we worked with both, uh, Don Union Associates and the contractor and their electrical sub, um, to come up with, we, we had several different options, um, and, uh, come up with, with this option and basically, uh, adds a little bit of conduit. It's, it's gonna, um, take, uh, a new fiber and, um, carry it between the admin building and our primary pump building. Um, in between there, it, uh, it also connects, um, uh, two of our, uh, two small buildings, which are our control buildings for our, um, primary clarifiers. Um, so, uh, this, this allows, um, both some temporary and permanent relocation of that fiber optic line, um, in, in that area to allow us to be able to construct that structure, so. Uh, the recommendation is to approve, uh, change order number one with Kokozing Industrial Incorporated, um, uh, for this work, uh, for an additional cost of $66,999. Um, and there are no additional days associated with, uh, with this change order. Um, it will be funded, um, or, or this change order is subject to funding through SRF. Um, you know, we have contingency monies through, through that, um, funding agency to, to be able to pay for this, so, um, it would be my recommendation to, to pay, uh, or to, to approve this, uh, this change order.
Now, I just want to make sure I understood, at first you said it was contingent upon SRF, do we need to put that in our motion? Is that with SRF approval or will we just take the order?
Uh, it, it's, it's up to you. I have it on the document itself, it's really more to protect, uh, us from the contractor moving forward, uh, before we get final, um, a, a letter back from SRF, so.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Boxey?
Recommendation to approve change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project phase one, um, to, uh, Kokozing Industrial Incorporated in the net increased amount of $66,999.
Second.
Second.
Do we want to say subject to SRF approval then?
Yeah, I'll amend it, um, subject to final approval by, yeah, SRF.
Second. Second.
There's been a motion and a second to, uh, approve change order number one with Kokozing Industrial, Inc., uh, for wastewater treatment plant phase one improvement project. It will be for an amount of $66,999 and subject to SRF approval. Any further questions or comments? If not, um, Jess, will you call the roll, please?
Almon, Almon.
Aye.
Greg, Greg.
Aye.
Sue, Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero, closed.
Thank you. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve contract amendment number one for the wastewater treatment plant levy certification.
Yes, Madam President and Board, um, this is a project that we started back in 2018, uh, when we hired Christopher Burke, um, Engineering to, um, uh, evaluate and ultimately certify, uh, our levy around our treatment plant. Um, and so they had come up with, um, a solution to be able to, um, to make some upgrades to the levy, uh, increase the height of it, uh, along a couple stretches, uh, the main area being, um, near the back entrance of the plant, uh, near the, the Murph Building. Um, and, uh, and when what they proposed, uh, we looked at the impact it would have to our bio solids loadout station, and, um, it would significantly, uh, change the grade in that area, um, and the trucks would then s- sit on a slope, which means they couldn't fill, uh, like they needed to, uh, so it ultimately, uh, means we wouldn't be able to, uh, to fill those trucks and now they would, they would have more, we'd have more trips, which would ultimately cost us more money, uh, to be able to do that, uh, and the, the cost of, so we looked at, at different options when it come to the levy, um, compared to, uh, the cost of having to move that loadout station or make modifications to that. Um, and, uh, what we've ultimately, uh, decided to move forward with is a, um, uh, there'll be a break in the levy, uh, and at that break, there'll be a gate that would automatically, uh, activate. Um, it would basically float up as the water were to start to, um, uh, to come into it, um, and it would then seal off, uh, the treatment plant. So on a normal basis, uh, we could keep the road level, uh, approximately how it is now and we could drive through there, um, but then when it, when you had a flooding situation, uh, we would be protected, um, because that gate would rise and you'd be able to, um, to close that area off. We would still have access into the plant from our other, uh, our front gate, uh, so it wouldn't close the plant off, but we would be protected from floodwaters, uh, that'd be coming in on the, the north side. Um, we did look at a couple of different, uh, options when it come to, uh, things like this, and we felt like the, the more automatic, um, gate was, uh, was the best option. The other, um, you know, you had to store, you had to keep people trained on how to use, uh, and how to implement, um, and it, it ultimately, um, would, uh, would be something, um, that, uh, that you'd have to replace, um, more often or, more often than you would this solution, uh, so we felt like, um, it, it was, it was worth going this route, um, to, to protect the plant, um, uh, basically just as an, as an insurance policy to, you know, to, to keep us protected, um, and not have to rely on, um, you know, workers, which we may have, you know, uh, need to do a lot of different things in a situation like that when, when you've got, uh, heavy, heavy floodwaters, uh, throughout the city, so. The recommendation here is to amend our contract with, uh, Christopher Burke Engineering, LLC, um, uh, to add this automatic gate feature to, um, to our levy design and certification. Um, and the additional, uh, fees for, uh, this change in scope and services, uh, would be an additional not to exceed, uh, fee of $28,000, uh, for a new total not to exceed fee of $247,700. And this will be split 50/50, uh, with, um, with stormwater funds.
Thank you. With what regularity do you anticipate this being needed?
Uh, very, um, very, very rare. I mean, and hopefully, um, you know, we've, we've not seen flooding, um, uh, like that that I, I'm aware of in any kind of recent history, uh, and I'm not sure, uh, you know, back in, in the early days of the plant in the, you know, 30s or 40s or 50s, uh, whether there was any kind of, uh, of major flooding. But, uh, you know, we do know that, uh, some of the statistics on rainfall have, um, you know, are, are potentially changing and shifting and, um, and, uh, you know, as soon as, uh, the other, the other piece of getting it certified, um, the levy certified is, if we were to have a disaster, um, or a natural disaster were to be declared, um, and funding were to be available, if we didn't have, um, a levy in place, uh, it, it's likely we may not be able to get some of that funding, uh, because we are within a, a floodway, so. Um, this, this would one, make insurance cheaper, um, if we were to, to expand that coverage, uh, or, and two, um, hopefully protect us from a, an event like that, um, if, if we were to have it, but if, if we were to have damage, um, hopefully the idea would be, we'd have funding available to us to help, help, um, you know, rebuild or rehab what we needed to.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Uh, hey, Elijah, um, do, do we have any idea how much this might cost? And then the other, I have another question is, uh, since this is electrical, um, and it's automated, uh, if we were to lose power at the plant, is there any backup contingency for power to, for this?
Yeah, um, so it's, it's actually, um, doesn't use any kind of electricity. It completely, uh, just uses buoyancy to activate the gate, so, uh, the gate basically floats, so as water were to come, uh, to the point where the gate, um, is housed in the ground, um, and were to fill up a reservoir down there, uh, you can kind of imagine the bottom of the gate is kind of like a boat, um, so it would, uh, as the water began to fill up that reservoir, it would push the gate up and seal with both sides of that, so, um, there's really, uh, it's a fairly, um, uh, fail-safe way of, of providing protection, without a, a, a real need for, um, you know, backup power or anybody to even be there. It could happen, uh, I mean, an event like that, you're gonna see coming, I mean, those floodwaters aren't gonna come immediate, but, uh, um, it would be something that, uh, you know, if, if it got to that point in the middle of the night and nobody were there, um, it, it would activate on its, on its own, so. Um, and then the other part is, yeah, cost, um, and that's where we, we looked at several different options, and the cost of this one, um, was estimated around $240,000 or $50,000. But when we compared that to the cost of having to do something with our loadout station, um, and moving that around, um, it, uh, it, this, this seemed like the better option and gave us, gave us what we needed, both for protection and, um, and the ability to continue to load out as we do now.
What length are we talking about?
Um, I think it was 55 feet.
Okay.
Um, if I remember right, it was, it's in that ballpark, um, and that may get refined a little bit as we move through the design, but, uh, enough that we'll be able to, you know, have, um, two large vehicles go in and out. I mean, it is a, one of the, the main, I guess, areas in and out of the plant, um, that back gate, so we need the ability to get, uh, large vehicles in and out, um, but it, it will definitely look different. I mean, we'll have to build up... I mean, we'll have to build up the levy on both sides, and there'll be probably a concrete wall on one side, and the other side will be an earthen barrier where we basically just raise the, raise a portion of the levy and a portion of the roadway. If you're down in the plant, the levy is really the bottom roadway as you drive around there, and as you get to the north side, it drops off when it really should increase in height. And we're not sure why that never happened in the 80s, you know, the rest of it was all built, but whatever reason, they laid, they left that area low, which doesn't give us the protection we really should have, so.
But it does not in any way, I mean, I would visualize with a levy that there's at least some walking up and down and over if someone were trying to access the plant, but with the gate that goes up and down, I mean, we're not making the plant more accessible to somebody, random person, however.
Correct, no, it's all contained within our existing fences, so it wouldn't increase the ability for somebody to be able to access the plant any more than they do now.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Mr. Steve?
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number one to contract 97-2018 with Christopher B. Burke Engineering of Indianapolis, Indiana, for professional services related to the wastewater treatment plant levy certification. As described in the proposed scope, services will be provided on an hourly basis at the rates contained in the agreement for a total additional not-to-exceed fee of $28,000 for a new total not-to-exceed of $247,700, of which $14,000 of this amended amount will come from the sanitary funds and $14,000 will come from stormwater funds.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve amendment number one to contract 97-2018 with Christopher B. Burke Engineering, LLC, Indianapolis, Indiana, for professional services related to wastewater treatment plant levy certification as laid out in the attached proposal and scope. Services provided on an hourly basis at the rate contained in the agreement for a total additional not-to-exceed fee of $28,000 for a new total not-to-exceed fee of $247,700, with $14,000 of the new amount coming from sanitary funds and just the other half from stormwater. Any further questions or comments? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Come on, come on.
Aye.
Craig, Craig.
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The next item of business is approved wastewater residuals permit number R-Fisk 2020, 21, 22, and 23, expiring 3/1/23. We'll go ahead for a motion then. I don't think we normally have any conversation of those.
I'll enter a motion to approve permit number R-Fisk 2020, 21, 22, 23 to Fisk Services, Incorporated of 271 South Franklin Road, Greenfield, Indiana, 46140. This permit shall be effective April 21, 2020 and expire March 1, 2023.
Second.
And a second to approve permit number R-Fisk 2020, 21, 22, and 23 with Fisk Services, Incorporated of 271 South Franklin Road, Greenfield, Indiana, 46140. The permit shall become effective April 21, 2020 and expire on March 1, 2023. Further questions or comments? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Come on, come on.
Aye.
Craig, Craig.
Aye.
Aye.
Sue, Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The next item of business is the approval wastewater residuals permit number R-SSS 2020, 21, 22, 23.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Buxey?
Motion to approve permit number R-SSS 2020, 21, 22, 23 to Aaron A. Groen of Speedy Septic Service, LLC, 4766 East Sandron Road, West College Corner, Indiana, 47003. This permit shall be effective April 21, 2020, expire on February 1, 2023.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve permit number R-SSS 2020, 21, 22, and 23 with Aaron A. Groen of Speedy Septic Service, LLC, 4766 East Sandron Road, West College Corner, Indiana, 47003. The permit shall become effective April 21, 2020 and expire on February 1, 2023. Any further questions or comments? If not, Jess, will you call the roll?
Come on, come on.
Aye.
Craig, Craig.
Aye.
Sue, Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The next item of business is the COVID-19 response from the RSD Pre-Treatment Department. Is that lean or?
Yes, that is lean. Okay. The pre-treatment department is responsible for protecting, you know, plant operations and the collection system, you know, throughout the Richmond Sanitary District. We received encouragement from our pre-treatment partners, from EPA, state, as well as other professionals, to forward some type of guidance out to our significant industrial users. Those are the, those are the facilities in town that we permit in order to flow waste to our, to our treatment plant. So we conducted, or we sent out correspondence to them, and I included a copy of that correspondence just reminding them that if they were going to shut down and/or have a reduction in their operations, that would be really important to the operation of our plant in terms of reduced flow and trying to prepare for, you know, reduced flow to our facility. And so far, we have received three industries in town that communicated to us proactively that they were going to be experiencing more than 20% reductions in their flow to our facility for treatment. The other, I guess, heads up that we received from other pre-treatment professionals really came from the West Coast because they were the first group to have to deal with the presence of COVID-19 within their communities, and that was that we, there were these horrific pictures of the lift stations or pumping stations within their collection systems that were being totally overwhelmed with the use of water commonly known as flushable wipes and/or disinfectant wipes. So we determined by contacting some of our health services in Richmond, as well as our, I'll call them our assisted living facilities, our, and other places where we have mature living arrangements, to ask them or to get feedback from them regarding the use of these types of products, and if they would be, have an interest in some sort of education outreach campaign. All of the responses of our outreach have been very supportive and very positive. So we moved forward with developing in, in, I guess, where we worked to develop a Richmond Sanitary District version of Toilets Are Not Trashcans Education and Outreach Campaign, and we've had a lot of collaboration from different groups in the community requesting washable stickers for their, for their, that they can place near their toilets, employee education. I received several personal stories from maintenance groups throughout the community that this type of effort was very welcome and needed, and all of those materials have now been distributed. And then we also were able to contact Walmart, Meyer, and Kroger, and we're working with them for point-of-sale education outreach pieces as well. Meyer's actually posted theirs on Saturday. Walmart and Kroger are still getting permissions from their corporate. So that's just the scope of trying to be proactive, to protect our collection system as well as our operations here, you know, at the plant.
Now, thank you, Eli, and this certainly is a good reminder, y'all, as obviously the rush that went on for the purchase of those products, there's clearly a lot more of them out in circulation at this point in time than there probably ever has before. It's a good reminder for everybody at home as well, you know, I know that the critical masses such as at the hospital or long-term care facilities where they alone have, you know, maybe understated the concerns that those facilities have with their, just their own, you know, plumbing facility, but then imagine that multiplied and on what's been our list, as well as then having a wastewater treatment plant. So it's a good reminder to everybody, even at home, you know, if they're using any of the disposable wipes of any type, then those have been properly in the trash, not in the toilet. So any other questions or comments? So, and then as well as being proactive on getting out to the businesses, have we noticed any form of significant decrease? You said three businesses were down 20%.
I actually have not checked the MRO regarding, regarding flow. We've had several rain events, so it would be hard to discern regarding the regular flow.
Okay, well, thank you very much for both of that and all of the proactive work that's being done, you know, to maintain the health as well as maintaining the health of all of our facilities.
Sue, can I? Sue, I'd like to also just recognize that there was several people within the Richmond Sanitary District that, you know, really did jump in and were very helpful in getting that all of this information developed and printed and have helped in the distribution. I failed and I should have. Denise, through the billing group, is also putting an insert into all of our residential bills. It's my understanding there's about 15,000 fact sheets that are going out to our residential customers as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Which is a significant effort.
Right, thank you. Okay, thanks, thanks for all the work for everybody in that regard. The next item of business is the discussion of the USGS Super Gauge Station Project.
Which is also, I'm on deck again.
Okay.
All right. This was just a request from the USGS to provide a project update. When this discussion first began, it was sort of before the COVID-19 priority, but the question was, would the board appreciate receiving a more formal update versus the typical type of update that would occur within just our, the RSD community staff people? I promised the USGS I would present that question to you, and so where we are with this project is, we began in October of 2017. It was, it is a three-year contract, and we have asked them for an additional proposal to extend this work. So at some point, if the board wants a formal presentation of what has been accomplished to date, you know, you would be welcome to make that an agenda topic and/or you can, when we, we, we as a staff will, will need to meet with them regardless, and then maybe we can just more informally invite you to attend if you have an interest.
Well, probably because of the open door, all three of us couldn't be there anyway. Maybe it's possible to schedule their meeting with you on a board day, and then they could give a short talk at the board meeting and then go in-depth with the rest of the staff. I see first, that would work.
That is actually one of the thoughts that we had. Again, we wanted to provide you with a memo to kind of find out what your thoughts were, and if you want us to proceed on a board day, we can do that.
Greg, come on, are you in for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be very interesting to hear how the time gets away that it's only been three years.
So if at some point you want to, you know, provide input to me in terms of when you would like to, you know, feel like you have time to schedule that as, you know, coinciding with your activity, that would be helpful.
Okay, I, I don't think it really matters because I think your upfront timing, we may or may, may or may not know how many board items are hanging on if you're trying to schedule with them, so we'll just pick a day that works for them, knowing that when, well, how far ahead of our contract do we need to start the discussion?
I've asked them, yeah, I've asked them to, to provide that, those estimates to me by the 1st of June, yes.
Okay. I'm still not sure how we'll be meeting in May, so maybe one of our June meetings would make the most sense, and we're on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we're on our project status update.
Yes, Madam President and Board, the first project with some updates, our CSO6 Storage Project. All the concrete curb and sidewalk restoration is complete. They should be anytime working on getting the rest of the roadway ready for paving. The contractor actually has not been, been working anywhere here in the past several weeks, but we anticipate them to be back soon, which would be good timing for us to be able to get that paved. They are using a sub milestone to do that work, and so they've, I know they've been working with them on schedule, so it sounds like we're pretty early on in the list to get that done. So as soon as, you know, things are ready and all the plants are open, they, they should be able to do that. We're also working on final quantities on that, that project, getting those all measured and calculated so we can bring a final change order to the board, which I anticipate will be a decrease. We're able to do some things to save some money on that project, so that, that should be helpful. Next project's the wastewater treatment plant activated cell process modification project, our treatment plant project. Some minerals on, a lot of things are still ongoing. Crews will begin digging soon for the aeration splitter, splitter box that we talked about earlier. They drained one of the clarifiers last week and worked on cleaning it. They drained one of the clarifiers last week and worked on cleaning it and have it down and cleaned as of, as of today. So that's, that's good news. We all have Donahue, one of their structural guys, come in and evaluate some of the, the concrete in the bottom of the tank. And this was one of the items that we had as a mandatory alternate or a separate price for, for this contract. And, you know, we didn't know the condition of that concrete with, with the, with all the, the water and still in the tanks. So one of the, the action items was to get those drained and evaluate that early on in the, the process. And from what we know right now, it sounds like the concrete looks pretty good, but we'll, we'll let the structural guy come in and make that determination. But if, if it looks good, that, that'll be some significant savings to us. It was about $40,000 per clarifier to, to replace that. So hopefully it's in good shape and we can continue to utilize what's there and not have to, to replace that. So we'll let you know probably by the next meeting whether that's going to happen, at least for the first clarifier. Each one will, will have its own evaluation. But I, I would anticipate if, if the first one looks good, there should be no reason that any of the others look a lot different, but we'll, we'll verify that each time. The, the next thing on that project, we've been working with the contractor and their instrumentation and control sub for that. We had talked about during the design, and then here early on in this project, they brought it up again, the sub, about potentially changing the brand of PLCs that we use, basically the little computers that are throughout the plant that help, help control all the operations and talk to our SCADA. And so we've been working with, with them on getting some pricing, on potentially making some, some changes to that, something that in the long run will likely be cheaper for us, something that's becoming more standard on a lot of equipment even. Like our blowers come with Allen Bradley PLCs, which is what we're looking at potentially going to. Right now, we have, we just, late last night, I got a, an equipment price or basically a price to do that. We haven't really evaluated yet, but it was $38,000 to, to do that. So we anticipate looking at that and then coming, coming to the board if it all still makes sense to, for a change order to, to switch those out and use Allen Bradley versus something else. So that's, I think that's the main, main things that are, we're working on, on that project. We just did a change order for the sludge thickening project, so we'll get all that executed and get them in here to, to finish up those punchless items. Grading and railing, Phase Two, they're reviewing a few of the shop drawings, make sure those are all in good shape. Some of the materials are, are here, and so I anticipate that to get started here very soon and get that constructed. And we are working on getting a proposal for the design of Phase Three. We likely already have enough money, hopefully in the existing PO to be able to do that. So we'll, we're waiting on that and we'll, we'll know that here before too long. Next project is our College Avenue sewer separation project. We had sent out notices to homeowners to try to do some investigation and get some measurements on basements before the COVID-19 thing broke. And we were able to get some of those, but not all of those. So we're working on figuring out what, what we need to be able to, to finish that design and come up with a solution that we know is going to get, get what we need in College Avenue done and at the same time be able to serve, serve everybody out there and get everybody connected where they need to. So we're still working on that and it's just kind of made it a little bit more difficult to get the information we need. But hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to do that and we've been working on that for the past couple of weeks to, to evaluate some of that. The next project, our West Side Interceptor.
Elijah?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Was that the project that we were trying to get done because of street surfacing that was going on in the summer?
Correct. Yes, yeah. So at least the, the part in College Avenue would be what we'd be looking at trying to get done. So we've actually, because of the timing of some of that, the intent was to, at least for part of the project, use our on-call contractor. And so we've actually, we're going to be sending him some, some information and trying to get some feedback from him on constructability of a few things. It's, it's not a very straightforward project. You know, there's a, a block of homes that, there's a big storm sewer that cuts diagonally through, so it kind of separates it into two different areas. And so we're trying to figure out, based on, you know, the elevations of that storm sewer and the elevations of the, the existing sanitary sewer, how, how do we get around that or over or under? You know, we don't want to make it any deeper than we have to because that's just more costly, but at the same time, we want to make sure we're deep enough to be able to serve everybody. And that's where we were trying to use some good information from, from, you know, gathered from, from basements and things like that. So we'll, we'll have to use some other methods to, to get what we need or be a little bit more conservative in, in the depths that we place the sewer. So, but yes, that is the reason for, for that one. Let's see. The next, yeah, West Side Interceptor, all the soil borings are now complete. Design is ongoing for, for this project. And this is actually one I, I wanted to bring up now, and we can have a kind of a bigger conversation if you want after this. But in some of the stimulus funding that, that is anticipated coming in the future, like it, like it was back in 2008, there's likely to be some type of infrastructure component. So we're trying to put ourselves in a position to be able to take advantage of some of that. And this, it'll likely be any project that's ready to go, basically, ready to be bid out and, and built. And so West Side Interceptor was one that we identified as that. It'll all be, everything, all the drafts that anybody's seen, looks like will all go through SRF, and at least money's available for, for us. So they have an application deadline of June. It'd be, that's the normal application deadline. But they also have a May 1st deadline to get bonus points, basically extra points on your application, because what they do is they rank all these in a project priority list, and then funding goes to those ones that rank high enough on that list. And you get 10 extra points if you submit by May 1st. So we believe we actually have a report that's in good enough shape to be able to submit to SRF by that May 1st deadline for the West Side Interceptor project. The other project that we identified potentially as, as a candidate is a portion of our Short Creek Interceptor project. And so we, we had a project workshop last week on that and basically determined what some of those alternatives looked like for, for what that project needed to be. And there's basically a section on the upper end, and there's a section on the lower end. So the Short Creek Lift Station is, is an upgrade that needs to happen as well as the best option looked at was upgrading the Hays Lift Station. And that, that's needed anyway. We actually were, were under design, I mean, that design's 90% done, 95% done. But there's another component, there'd have to be a, a separate force main that would be needed as part of that to, to really solve some of those upper end issues. So we're not sure yet whether we tried to make an application by the normal June deadline for that one. We don't think that one we could do by, by the May 1st deadline. We also, I talked about trying to apply together, basically put some language in the West Side Interceptor application to, to cover us when it comes to the Hays Lift Station project. So one of our consultants is reaching out to SRF and, and talked through some of those different, different things, and we'll make some of those calls of whether or not it makes sense to, what, what makes the most sense to go, go these different ways. But I wanted to get some feedback, I guess, from you guys, because this is all kind of happening quick. And nothing's been, you know, there's no guaranteed money out there. And just because we make an application doesn't mean we have to proceed with, with any of the options that ultimately are presented to us. But I hate not to make the application and then, you know, lose out on some, you know, 0% financing or, or free money for, for history's sake. We, we did get about a million dollars back in 2008 when, when we had applied and, and got, I got some money for our tertiary project, so.
I remember that though, because like you said, they had to be turnkey projects and we were, we were ready at that point in time. So, I mean, I certainly would, you know, commend you for your efforts to, you know, to be proactive, to go ahead and get registered, signed up and move forward. I guess the issue would become, would that would probably move up our requirements to be, to begin with, if we're going to go ahead and make ourselves ready for that, would we need to go ahead and pay out for the engineering and the design services earlier than what we would?
Gotcha. Yeah, we're actually already in that process anyway. I mean, we're, we're going down that path that basically, I mean, West Side Interceptor was one that we had intended on paying for with cash. And basically, my thought would be, we just switch that around. It would hopefully allow us some more flexibility in how we fund the high-rate treatment system here in a few years. So, you know, hopefully we would get some, some free money. If, if not, it would be 0% interest, which would still, you know, is still money in the bank for us to be able to, to utilize for, for other things. So I, I think it's not, it's not really expediting anything too much, it's just making that application now. The one thing that, that it could expedite a little bit is the Hays Lift Station project. And, you know, that, that design, just for the lift station rehabilitation was essentially done. But what we found with the Short Creek Interceptor evaluation is we need to tweak the force main part of that. So that's something, we're not sure what we want to do. Hopefully, you know, we'll have another meeting between now and then, but we'll need to make that call whether or not, it, it may cost us a little bit more to actually apply and get the documents in, in the right, you know, looking the right way to be able to apply and have all the information we need for that one. So there could be a little bit of cost to, to do that for, for Hays. So we'll see. Maybe that one doesn't make as much sense. But I think because of the position we're in for West Side, it definitely makes sense just to, with really a little, a little bit of effort, go ahead and get that, get that in. It's not going to really cost us any more than it would already, so.
Since we probably won't meet before May 1st, is there any requirement for us to do any kind of board action on this?
I, I don't know for sure. It wouldn't hurt. I know there's typically a couple documents, like public hearings and things like that, that will ultimately happen, but those deadlines have been waived and pushed back because of everything that's going on. So we'll ultimately, you know, have to have that if that's what we proceed with, but it, it may not hurt to get some type of board action to, to approve applying for these because we will have to have a signature from probably either Sue or Emily Palmer as authorized representatives to, to make that application.
So basically, we would make some form of motion to approve the application for, to SRF, preparing, preparing and filing for application to SRF for the West Side Interceptor and Short Creek Interceptor projects?
Uh, yeah. I think that sounds, that sounds good.
Okay. Does someone want to make that motion?
President.
President.
I'll make a motion. To approve the, if needed, an application to SRF for the West Side Interceptor and the Short Creek Interceptor.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the application. Prepare the application for SRF for the West Side Interceptor and Short Creek Interceptor projects. Any further questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that either Sue or Laura or Emily Palmer be permitted to sign the application if needed.
Okay. So then we won't, the motion will then add that either Emily Palmer or myself can sign all the documents. Jess, you may call the board.
Come on.
Come on.
Aye.
Greg.
Aye.
Sue.
Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll, I'll keep everybody updated on, on that and we'll, we'll work to get, get that in and hopefully something will, beneficial will come from that, so. I think one more project on, well, both, both related, I guess, two more things, but both related to, to lining or pipe rehabilitation. We are working on a few areas that were identified in the, the brick sewer evaluation that we did over the past year or so. Nothing that's in dire, in dire need of, or in, in bad shape that's going to fall, fall down, but a few missing bricks here and there. So we're working on trying to get those areas put together and, and get those patched and repaired, just so it doesn't lead into, to larger issues down the road. But overall, as you remember, that, nothing, nothing major was identified, everything was in, in very good shape, especially considering the age, so. And then the, the next thing is our lining project that we had out for construction here. All but one area has been lined, and that area we had found had, had a joint that was separated more than it had been previously. So we're trying to figure out what we need to do to, to still get that lined. So, but that, that project is, is nearly complete, really complete minus that, that one thing. So that, it's good to, good to have that, and we're working on our next lining project now. We've been working with Sewer Magnus to identify some of those areas and have, have plans ready. We just need to, to figure out what, what exactly we want, we want to include in, in a project this year. That's all I have, unless somebody has, has questions.
Oh, thanks a lot. As always, we've been very busy down there.
Yes.
Appreciate everybody's efforts. That takes us to miscellaneous. Did anyone have anything to bring before the board under miscellaneous? Looking to see if anybody's raised anything here. If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving.
There's been a motion and a second. Jess, you can call the board.
Come on.
Come on.
Aye.
Greg.
Aye.
Sue.
Aye.
Three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.